Now that we have a clock that tells us it's time to get started, huh, Robert?
Yes.
Welcome, everybody. 2024. If we're ready for that or not, it's here, isn't it? We'd like to excuse Janice Dushinson tonight from our meeting and remind all of you about the USBA conference just coming later this week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Superintendent.
All right, board, I whipped the script a little bit. I usually save the superintendent's piece till the end, but we've been running out of time. So in my selfish nature bent, I'm going to go ahead and start tonight because there's some really great things that I want to point out and celebrate. First of all, many of you might have seen Robert's email about our triple bond, AAA bond rating. That is a big deal. And I just wanted to show you what we posted to the Weaver School District website. Blaine helped craft that message there. But I'm just going to read it because I think it's deserving of a formal celebration. It says, "We're thrilled to announce that Weaver School District recently received a prestigious AAA bond rating, a testament to our commitment to fiscal responsibility and sound financial management. This top-tier rating reflects the district's strong financial position, effective leadership, and dedication to providing the best possible education for our students. We extend our gratitude to the entire Weaver School District community for their support and collaboration in achieving this significant milestone. Together, we continue to build a foundation for success and excellence in education." And then I provided a link. I'll share this agenda with the rest of you right after the meeting electronically, but you can go and take a look at a little bit more information on if you'd like to. Robert, I just want to give a shout out to you, the entire Finance and Operations Department, Seth Pilkington, you guys just did a wonderful job helping us achieve this. Is there anything you want to add to that, Robert?
No, the, once again, it's just a tribute to our, we are a frugal bunch. We really are. And when I work with the directors and others, they're, they want to do what's best for kids and they want to spend our resources wisely. And so it's just a testament to the organization you talked about.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, and then I wanted to give the board an update on one of our, well, our top priority, and that is student safety and employee safety at Weaver School District. And it's been a while since we've updated you on the great things that we've been adding to our schools. I don't, I won't go through the entire list, but I want you to take a look and have access to the list that shows you where we have added audio enhancement, which includes the Safe Alert system. That Safe Alert system allows, if there's an emergency in the school, it allows us to have maybe a quicker response and better awareness around what's happening in our schools. So you can see we've got 11 schools just in the last couple of years that have been updated to different degrees, and it lists them there. The funding sources for those audio enhancement systems, most of it has come out of ESER funding that's going to go away this September 2024. So we're trying to spin that down a little bit. Sometimes a school will bring a little funding out of their TSSA. And we've used some bond revenue on some of our newer schools that we've implemented those systems. So you'll notice on the back of that page, we have upcoming school projects that are listed there. And there's another nine schools that we're set to start on here pretty quickly ordering equipment, audio enhancement equipment. We have high schools, junior highs, and elementaries in that mix. And then we'll add three elementaries. If we have the funding, we'll add three additional elementaries at the end of that list. And again, I listed the funding sources for you there. Last, two last things, and then I'll turn it back to some updates from our departments and the president here. We were awarded two more USBE teen grants, teen center grants. And as you know, the foundation had a very successful jubilee again. And a lot of that funding will go towards the completion of our teen centers. We have the one at Two Rivers that's up and running. We will be beginning construction on the Bonneville and Roy Teen Centers here pretty imminently. Westville will have a teen center that has already been embedded into the architectural plan. And this most recent grant award will partially fund Weaver and Fremont Teen Centers. So we'll be covered. We will be covered across the district with our high schools. Big shout out to Emily Euler and of course, our maintenance and facilities crews. They're working so hard, along with our construction partners. President, if you divide by one favor, I'm going to step over to that podium for one quick presentation because I want to present it a little different way to you when I talk about the strategic plan.
Wonderful.
Gina?
Yes.
My question for the partial funding for Fremont and Weaver is that that's from the grant? And then will that be a focus of next year's jubilee?
Right off.
Okay.
Yep, right off.
Yes, so the ongoing jubilee fundraising efforts will be geared until we get those done, is my understanding with the foundation. All right, Trent has put a visual up, and I'm going to move through this very quickly because I want to make sure we give our presenters enough time. But board, I want to go off script a little bit. I usually am sitting right over here, and I feel like I can't see your faces. And we are headed into a really important three months for Weaver School District. We are going to put together our strategic plan for the next three years and hopefully for the next five years. So there's, there'll be two tiers to that plan. I recently had the good fortune to go to the Big Island. I don't know how many of you have been to the Big Island, but there is an interesting phenomenon on the Big Island, and I want to just point it out to you. The pictures are small, but if you've never been to Big Island, Hawaii, one side of the island looks like Mars. It's craters, it's lava, it's years and years and years of lava. And it doesn't look like your tropical Hawaii. I love Big Island for this reason, there's just so much diversity. But one of the things you notice on the Kona side of Big Island are the little four-legged critters running around called wild goats of Kona. And I recently went to Hawaii, was able to take my 80-year-old father. Might hopefully be not his last trip, but he sure geared up for this trip. He takes a very large pair of binoculars because he's intrigued by these goats on the Kona side. We sat on a beach one day, and instead of looking at the waves, my dad's chair was turned and he was looking into the hills. And he was watching these goats. He was just looking all over the hills. And you can see that if you're on the Kona side of Big Island, they're pretty plentiful. And one of the things about goats we know to be true is they're always trying to clamor for higher ground. They're always trying to get to the highest perch they can get on. It's just part of their nature. Well, I wanted to use this metaphor to let you know that the mindset that we have as a district leadership team going into the next three months is how do we put a plan together to get Weaver School District to higher ground? How do we elevate at a time in our world where mediocrity tends to rule the day? Where we know that kids are having mental health issues galore and families are having struggles financially and otherwise? How do we, how do we as a school district ensure that we do our job to get kids to higher ground so that they can be successful? We know that when we're on higher ground, the view is breathtaking, the perspective is expansive, the possibility is seamless when you're standing on higher ground and you have a beautiful view. That's a view that a lot of the goats have right there of a little inlet that I'm very familiar with from where they stand. There's a quote, a poem, or a saying, "Do all the good you can by all the means you can and all the ways you can and all the places you can and all the times you can to all the people you can as long as you ever can." And I, as we've been talking about putting this plan together, I can guarantee you many of them are sitting in this room. We have a district leadership team that I believe full-heartedly in, whole-heartedly in that they have the best intentions of students in mind. These are the areas that we plan to focus. We have been gathering data, and these are the six, seven areas that have risen to the top some speak in terms of areas that we plan to implement into the strategic plan for our district. These will be our areas of focus. I won't go into a whole lot of detail. I'll share this presentation with you. But you can see that I have pinpointed underneath each heading some of the areas that we will really be drilling down into and setting some goals for around for the next three to five years. Again, a quote, "Be a kind voice in this broken-hearted world. Give grace and be ready to receive it. Listen so well that the person you're with can rest in your loving attention for a moment." And here's my favorite part of this saying, "Be a light, be a light, be a light." What I'm hoping we can do with our strategic plan with your support, board, is put together a plan that will motivate our teachers, our classified, our support staff, and especially our kids to dig a little deeper and reach a little higher and to realize their potential. And so I'm really excited about this time for the last year and a half. Like I said, we've been gathering data, and we're going to show you each part of the plan and get your feedback. On your agenda tonight, I'll finish with this. You'll see it on the back of the first page about halfway down. We need to come up with what's called a board vision statement or a board imperative. And what I'd like to ask you to do, if you wouldn't mind, between now and next meeting, is take a look at those two questions that I posed to you. What are the hopes, aspirations, and dreams of our board? What do you have for young people? What would you like to say that you would hope for our young people in Weaver School District? What skills and mindsets do young people need to ensure that they're going to be successful in the future? I'd love to receive some input from each of you. We'll do the heavy lifting and put that into a statement of some sort that reflects the board's imperative for our district. But those are the two statements I were hoping that you could reflect on a little bit as board members and be willing to give us some feedback on. Any questions about where we're headed? We talked a little bit about this in our special board study session recently. Any questions?
I think it looks good.
Okay. All right, I just, I just want to let you know how excited we are. We're on, okay? President, the time is yours.
Hey, thank you. Well done. Heidi?
Doug.
You know, I think we're going to get you a stool, but Sam, because that's, this is a long time for you to stand.
No, I think she should stand, and then maybe we can go through it.
Okay, we have. Can I have that on? We have three policies that we are bringing back to the board on second reading and three policies that we are introducing to the board on first reading tonight. So I'll start by just going over the policies for second reading just briefly because we've already talked about those, the substance of those policies in the last board meeting. And there haven't been substantive changes made to any of those three policies since the last meeting. The first policy is Policy 4400, Student Records, which had not been revised since 2003. So 20 years later, we are now updating it to ensure that it complies with current state and federal law. And there was one change made in that policy since the last time we presented it to the board. Our Student Services Director has pointed out that we probably should have a provision in there which explains that if a parent or student requests their record, then under federal law, we have 45 days to comply with that. So we did add that paragraph to Policy 4400, and that's the only change that we've made since the last time we presented it to the board. Policy 4540, Student Organizations, is a policy that we presented to the board two months ago on first reading. And last month, realized that there were some formatting changes that we hadn't done and it wasn't ready for second reading last month. Those have now been made, and now they're being brought back to you on second reading. The substance of that policy hasn't changed much. It's a policy that explains how we, how we organize our groups and our clubs and our schools. We typically, across the state, they're called curricular or non-curricular clubs. In our district, we call them groups. If it's a non-curricular club, and, and club if it's a curricular club. And nothing in the policy is substantively different than what we've been doing for several years. We just organized it in a way that the formatting makes a little more sense, where we have general provisions for our clubs and our groups and then processes for how to create a group or a club. And that's all consistent with state law, not a lot of discretion in that policy. The final policy that we're presenting to you on second reading is our Student Code of Conduct Policy, Policy 5200. If you recall, last month, I explained that there are some minor changes we made, we're making and presenting to you this month to address some inconsistencies with our practice. What we've been doing in practice doesn't align with our policy, and we wanted to make sure that they align. But we also realized that our Student Code of Conduct Policy needs an overhaul. We want to make sure that it is consistent with best practices in terms of how we approach student discipline. We are also creating an administrative handbook, which we have, but it currently is only being used in-house. And we want it to be able to be utilized and accessed by parents and students. And we want it to merge with our Student Code of Conduct. So that's a longer-term project, and there are other issues within the policy that we want to fix. But we are going to hold on that until we have a chance to really do a thorough overhaul. But we did want to address some of the immediate issues that we were running up against in the policy now. And so that's being presented on second reading. Any questions on the policies that are being brought back on second readings before I move on to the new policies? Okay. The new policies, we have three, like I said. One is a revised and combined policy. I think I've mentioned over the last several months that we have a lot of policies that could be combined because of the subject matter of the policy. And we had a donations policy as well as a policy for naming of facilities. And we determined that it made sense to combine those because a lot of our naming, a lot of our facilities are named after our donors. And so we combined the donation and the naming policies and included some additional language about how we are going to receive donations and some specific explanation of the kinds of donations that we receive. Obviously, we work very closely with the foundation when we receive donations. And we worked with Emily Euler on this policy to make sure that what we were writing into our policy and practice aligns with what the foundation is doing and needs.
So the one thing I thought of, did we decide about mascot naming? Because I, because that specifically talks about naming those schools, but we're going through a new mascot naming with, or not, Bates. So do we want to include, is that the place to include? Or is mascot, because mascot should follow some sort of procedure, correct? I mean, I know if you're building a new school, it's hand in hand. But if we're re-mascotting the school, I don't know.
That's a good question. I think if the mascot is being named in conjunction with some kind of donation or contribution, it would fit into this policy. I don't know if that is the common practice.
Is this the only place in policy where it talks about naming of schools in general?
We have the.
I know, I know it.
6600 talks about.
Okay, so is that separate?
Okay. 6600 is combined in here, but we did have, I thought we have a policy that talks about the choosing of a new name for a school. I just don't think, and that's different than.
And I don't think we explicitly speak to mascots, so it might be a good idea to add that.
So if that's a separate policy, then maybe we just add that to the separate, okay.
I think it makes more sense to put it.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure if there was a second one. But it's just, as we move forward, I don't see that we, I mean, who knows if we ever have to rename another mascot, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't do that very often.
No, but I guess you just, you just never know. What is next going to not be politically correct?
You're gonna change the Weber Warriors, good luck.
Yeah, I think that this policy, the idea behind this particular section was what procedures and parameters are in place when we name a facility after a contributor or supporter of the school district.
That's kind of what brought this up, was we had the situation and really didn't have anything written guideline for it.
Right, right.
But the policy does talk about the naming committee and what it consists of. So that's where my questions were.
Okay. Yeah, a couple, just one thing to point out in this policy, as we have run into some problems where sometimes our business partners will offer a donation in exchange for in-kind services from the school district, like advertising. And we just want to make sure that any contract or agreement or MOU that obligates the district to provide in-kind services is run through the business administrator and myself so that we're not committing to things that we probably don't want to be committing to.
Very good.
That's Policy 3250. The next policy on your agenda is 4600. And 4600 is an amended policy that was called, was it our travel policy?
Yeah.
Travel policy. And we are, this is our Extended Curricular Travel Activities Policy. And let me just tell you that this was months in the works with a lot of stakeholder input. This policy addresses any organization within our, any student organization, not, this is not about employee travel, any student organization within our district that is traveling overnight for a competition or for an activity that's approved by the school district. This includes processes for applying for an overnight travel, how many advisors, and all of the elements and procedures that would be necessary to approve a request for overnight travel. I have a place.
Sorry, I have, yes, so I have something else that I was thinking of as I was reviewing this policy. So we had talked about how this policy covers our UHSA A-sanctioned teams. It covers our CTSOs, but then it also includes other curricular clubs. So, you know, we have drama traveling, we've got orchestra, theater, whatever. So my question is, because I was going over our fee schedule, and our fee schedule specifically, I think there's like five groups that the fee schedule talks about has fees for over, for out-of-state or overnight travel. So that's like drama, debate, theater, orchestra, whatever. So my question is, if this new policy will now open up to any curriculum? Because, so this is, this was where my thinking came from. So Bonneville, I know that their automotive program has traveled out of state for a national competition, but there's no automotive out-of-state line item for fees. I went over it pretty clearly. So that's my question to you guys. How does that work for other groups who on the fee schedule, it doesn't list, it doesn't say automotive has an out-of, or an overnight fee schedule? So how do we work that with other groups outside of drama, theater, debate, orchestra, who has a national competition or wants to travel overnight? Sorry, that's something that just like came to me as I was, because we spent a lot of time on this and I feel like we, we thought through mostly, but that was my question. So I don't know, how did, how did Bonneville travel before with their automotive where we don't have a fee schedule line item for that?
Yeah, Kelly, I would assume there's two avenues. First one would be that it would go before the travel committee, out-of-state travel committee, and maybe be brought to the board as an approved, you know, sanctioned activity because it's out of the box, right? And/or that group could ask the fees committee to consider implementing, putting that on the fee schedule because that is updated yearly.
Okay, and I, I guess my question is, why, why those five only are on the fee schedule? Because they're the ones who have asked to travel in the past?
I think it's tradition that's just where we're.
I just want to keep this open to other, I mean, we can't box in any group that will have an opportunity to travel. So how do we work that in the fee schedule?
It's a good point. We could discuss that with the committee.
Yeah, I, I think that, just not to put the cart for the horse, we ought to make sure that we're including any and all organizations in the overnight travel policy. And any group that does travel, we need to put that fee in the fee schedule. Even if they're not going to travel, if there's a possibility they might travel, parents should be notified and made aware that if this group travels, this is a fee. But I think the first question is which groups are able to travel? We tried to, so you can attest, we tried to include that under Section 4, which starts on page one and goes over to page two, where we explain that overnight travel must be primarily for an educational purpose and will only be approved for school organizations that are UHSA approved or that are affiliated with a state or national educational organization. And maybe it's right there that we could amend that to also add a performing arts class or any other organization certified by the overnight travel committee or something like that. So it's all inclusive.
Are we talking about 4A?
Yes.
Yes.
I think it was 4, was it 4A and B? I think that was just, yeah, if we just didn't say UHSA A-teens and then other curricular groups, that should be part of that. Because otherwise, then we're precluding anything that's not UHSA A-sanctioned or a CTSO.
Right, right.
But leaving it open to, who knows what will come up with any group that, I have no idea. And then it goes to the travel committee. It doesn't mean that they get to travel, it just means that they have that opportunity.
I have a special request or awards that are won out in the field because actually, you know, and then take it to the travel committee. Because again, I think the automotive was very rare. I mean, you guys do that every day and CTEs.
But automotive will probably, I mean, they've got a really great program. They may start traveling annually.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, you know, in that particular case, they won a competition and qualified. And that's kind of how we, I mean, that's, that's how we rationalize that travel. So in cases where people, and I think that's in policy as well, that you can win a competition and go. The issue, you're correct when you say that it's outside of, it's not technically a CTSO in automotive because that was a competition outside. Because see, the only thing they have is Skills USA. So that's a competition that they're competing in independently. We have two schools doing so.
And I, like I have, I think it's great for all of those groups to have the opportunity to travel as long as it's outlined in the policy, that it's not, we don't prohibit non, because like I said, I have it, I personally have an issue for saying only theater can travel and only choir can travel because we have so many other groups that do great things. So I just want to make sure that those were also precluded, precluded by the fee, by not being on the fee schedule.
Yeah, and I think we can address that between now and the second reading by perhaps by A and B. I think something that the board should be aware of, the committee that reviewed this did include an additional requirement for travel, which I think will take care of this issue, and that is it has to be for an educational purpose. So whatever the group is, the travel has to be for an educational purpose, which is defined in this policy now under Section 3 as a high-level competition or a course of study, class, education, or where a significant majority of the time on the trip is spent for an educational purpose. So we're not just sending kids to Disneyland for fun, giving them an hour of something that they're doing that has to do with school, that the majority of the trip is for an educational purpose. And that would be that the district travel committee would review the itinerary that is proposed by the advisor in order to determine whether or not the group is traveling or seeking travel for an educational purpose.
That covers it, doesn't it?
It should. We just need to make sure that in Section 4A and B, we're making sure that we are including any and all groups that would be able to travel as long as they're traveling for an educational purpose. So we may have to modify the language in Section 4A and B. But I think if we do that, then we would include all these groups. And again, as long as it's being done for an educational purpose.
I don't think they've changed the policy. I think it's there.
No, thanks, Heidi. Sorry, we spent a lot of time on it, and so everybody involved has done a great job. I appreciate everybody who's like, like I said, worked hard, answered all my questions, thought of time. I think we've solved a lot of problems, so thanks.
Are there any other questions? I know it's a lengthy policy, there's a lot of pink, that's the new language. We did some reorganization too, so it made more sense to read through it. But like, like we're members and said, we just spent a lot of time talking to a lot of stakeholders to make sure that we were covering every issue that could possibly come up. And we may have missed some, but we can certainly address them between now and next time.
Kelly, I think some of those, some of those statements have to be a little bit general. There's impossibility to cover every single situation that's going to come up.
Right.
Yeah.
And so we've got to have some general over the top of that.
Absolutely. I think just as a general statement, policies are better left general and high level so that we can, we don't pick the worst of the corn.
Probably we'll take it to the committee and discuss it, but it's not there.
Any other questions on this particular policy? That's the big one.
No, I just mentioned to superintendent, we had a young man in here a couple of board meetings ago that was an elementary student that was, had traveled nationally for a robotics competition, and now he couldn't travel because of the policy. And I just asked superintendent how that ties into this whole thing and if it's called out in there.
Yes, do as you please.
Yes, do us a good, and I'd love you to speak to the section so that they can review that as, as board members, but I think we weighed as a committee, the committee weighed very heavily the liability, the safety, all of those factors. The robotics program, we absolutely love, adore, and promote. We want kids to have the opportunity. Where it becomes problematic is where they're traveling out of state and being promoted by our district to do so. So we're going to really focus on state-level competitions. There are, we will certainly support a parent's desire to take their child to a national competition, but we just can't use school, school monies for that. So PTA, the foundation sometimes kicks in some donations to help. We will certainly try to, to encourage those types of things, but it's, it's, it's so, so much liability to have a small child with, and then the parent has to go, and it places quite a burden on the family as well, yeah.
And that's addressed, president, on page four, so section five procedures, number, letter F, which is on page four of the policy, just an outright prohibition of overnight travel is not allowed in elementary school, and it's exactly for the reasons that superintendent expressed, that sending a sixth grader or younger on a trip out of state is a significant liability, would require parents. And whereas if we do have a student who qualifies for a fee waiver, then we would certainly want to cover all fees that would be incurred by that trip, including parents' fees as well, and that can get quite costly to the district. So that was one reason that the district determined to draw the line at elementary school. Generally speaking, junior high students will also not be allowed to travel overnight, but there may be some exceptions, and those are outlined on that same page, on page four under letter F. And I apologize, there's some formatting issues we'll have to fix, and it's going to fracture the letter G.
I would also add, board, that the committee did a lot of work, especially around exploring what other districts are doing. We can't find a district that allows elementary school-aged kids to travel for the same reasons.
Well, and for me, there's a huge equity issue with elementary travel if we're requiring a parent to travel, where we have some schools where that's an easy solution, and we have other schools where time, job, or childcare is an issue, and they can't just go out of town with their elementary student, and I think that's, that's a big factor to me. And at the end of the day, they have state and opportunities in the future where they can travel. So I know we have some disappointed parents in the district, and I do feel bad for that, but I, I do agree, since we've got our neighboring districts aren't allowing elementary kids to travel, we're just kind of writing that somewhere.
If there are other questions on this policy by the board or by anyone else in the public, please feel free to email us and we can certainly address them, because like I said, I recognize this is a lengthy policy. The last policy, I will touch on really briefly. This policy is a brand-new policy, and it was requested by our teachers. Actually, this is the policy eighty-three forty. We did give it a number of existing policies that has to do with what was the policy in eighty-four before, with the tech policy, but this is a social media policy, social media use for employees.
Tech services website posting guidelines.
Tech services website posting guidelines, which we've incorporated into this policy. But we had teachers come and ask us for guidance, what are the district's parameters regarding social media use? And the policy is divided into two primary sections. One is their personal social media use, and then another one is the district's social media, where teachers are creating websites, and what can be on those websites, and what can't in the process for approving those. So we did send this policy back to our teachers group that proposed it in the first place. They had some suggestions, and we reviewed those and incorporated what we could, but we feel like this is a policy that addresses the needs of our teachers and explains to them very clearly what could get them in trouble for posting online. We recognize also in the policy everyone's First Amendment rights, that people have a right to freedom of speech, and that includes our employees, they have those same rights, but where that speech interferes with their ability to do their job at the school, there are some regulations that can be imposed, and that's outlined in this policy. That is policy eighty-three forty on our first reading. Oh, we did, this is our first reading?
Yeah.
Any, any questions on this policy? All right, we will, please, please, as a board meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll crank, squeeze some approvals out of the board.
I'll try to be more concise, I'm not going to be short.
I did, president, just to comment, I like to keep my policies and procedures manual up to date, in case we want to get questions, we'll probably refer to that. And we have a lot of changes that we add or delete, then want to make sure we get the completed final policy.
Absolutely.
Approved, so we can put it in the manual so they're up to date.
Absolutely. We're also, just for the board's information, a little something to give you now, but we are putting together a newsletter for our administrators and asking the administrators to take it back to their faculty when the board does approve policies that impact the administrator and/or their faculty, so that it's not just an approval, that it actually triples down to those who are implementing the policy. Thank you.
Do we have a lot working this gives, delete?
Yeah. We'll just get you the other one.
But we can direct them to that site, and those guys, we got it in the top.
Wonderful. Mr. Mitchell. Oh, and also Mary Jo Williams, sorry about that.
Good evening, board. We were asked to update the enrollment numbers, very preliminary, I'm going to preface it with that, based on the declarations that were made with the new boundaries. And so we set a date for students who were grandfathered to fifth, eighth, tenth, and eleventh grade students currently, who are either choosing to go to the new boundary school or remain at their current school. Hopefully you guys have the numbers included in your packets, just wanted to run through and touch base on a couple. You'll notice that there are, there are a few that are still above ninety percent at secondary level. So Bonneville's at ninety-one point four two, that's a pretty transient school though, so that number tends to fluctuate quite a bit. So it will dip well down into the, the high eighties and rarely get above ninety-two percent. So that is pretty stable in there. Roy and Weaver are still pushing ninety-eight percent, so those, they've got quite a few students still in there. And then Orion is above ninety-eight percent also. So those are three where we're still pretty close to max capacity. We anticipated that when we introduced the 10th grade students being able to stay at their schools. When we first started the discussion, there was some talk about, you know, all of our schools would be reduced enough to allow for some potential boundary exceptions. That was prior to the 10th grade numbers, where those 10th grade students given that opportunity to stay. So that has obviously altered some of these numbers. For the most part, all of our schools are relatively healthy. For the heavily impacted schools that we anticipated, Fremont is looking somewhere between thirty and forty percent reduction in students. Roy High is less than one percent, may have quite a few of those current students that have chosen to stay at Roy High. Weaver is right around two and a half percent reduction, so most of those students also chose to stay at Weaver High. Rocky Mountain is about thirty-five percent reduced, that's our largest in our district. Sandridge is about six and a half percent, and then Walquist is about seventeen percent. So those are the schools that were most impacted. For Mountain View and Westfield, the numbers that are there are strictly those that are, are coming in either through a progression of ninth to 10th grade, or sixth, or, yeah, sixth and seventh into the junior high and the grandfathered students. So it's a combination of all those students, that's where we're getting those numbers for Westfield, one thousand fifteen, and for Mountain View, six hundred twenty-two. We anticipate, starting tomorrow, quite a few boundary applications being turned into the schools. So we're going to monitor that very closely, make sure we're not just opening the floodgates. We want to kind of propose that we set some, some caps for those two new schools, that way we're not struggling with staffing and trying to find and hire new teachers at the last minute. So we're looking for Mountain View somewhere between seven hundred twenty-five, seven hundred fifty, which does allow for a good number of boundary exceptions, and then for Westfield, somewhere between twelve fifty and thirteen hundred is where we're looking to make sure that we put a cap on this.
So people who have declared, are they allowed to undeclare or are they stuck?
So if they declared, so I'll use the, the couple examples, we're looking at students who have chosen to stay maybe at Rocky or Fremont, they're in the new school's boundaries, they could go to those new schools with no problem. If a student has chosen to go to their boundary school and changes their mind to go back to their prior school, that's where a boundary exception would need to be created. So that's where we're at with the, the secondary schools. It will fluctuate over the next couple of months, and we can continue to update to see those numbers change.
So I'll apologize because I did not put a paper in your packet. Trent, can you put the, but I can get this to you so that you have it. And as Brock said, this is the tentative first draft, knowing that tomorrow is when we're going to start accepting those boundary exceptions. So we anticipate that this is going to change. Ours will also be impacted in that we haven't finalized all of those grandfathered fifth grade students to the appropriate school, so that will also impact it. And we have kindergarten registration in March and April, and so that is also going to impact that, knowing that for the last couple of years, our kindergarten numbers have been dropping. So as we projected the numbers in this document, we use current kindergarten numbers and decrease those just by about one percent, which is what the birth grade, birth rate is decreasing. So know that kindergarten is still very tentative, and we'll wait till we get that kindergarten registration to solidify some of those, some of those numbers. We had a few schools, mostly our dual-language immersion schools, that were still at higher percentages, and those fluctuate depending on the number of boundary exceptions that they accept for those programs. And I think, was it, Far West was our other one that was still in the ninety percent. So I think we'll reiterate what Brock said, that these numbers are still very tentative, but we wanted to put them out and let you know where we're at as we work through this process. Do you have any questions in regards to the elementary schools?
What's, what's your projected number at the new elementary?
Seven hundred is the capacity, that's the projected number. Sorry, right now is four hundred forty.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Matt Williams.
Good evening, board, superintendent. I have a couple of items that I'd like to walk you through with. First of all, I'd like to start with an update on NAL, which is the National Academic League that we participate in in junior high. We have one of the best, our district just provides a great experience for kids in the NAL. At the beginning of this year, and I have a handout there for you just so that you have this information, on eight-seven, we were notified by Donna Elmquist, who's the National NAL president, right? So it's a, it's a national organization that runs it. Dan Barney works with myself and, and kind of runs our NAL program for us. They told us, and that's that first bullet point, that it said that they were going to discontinue it this year, but because Dan and Donna know each other personally, Donna said that she would help us run it for this year at that time. So we met, talked with the board of managers, let the NAL teachers, coaches know at that time that we would still run it this year, but we were looking for possibly an alternative for next year because NAL was kind of going away on a national level. We competed the season, it's October sixteenth through December seventh, it's the same as our volleyball. I had a, had a great season. The championship was at WIC, Roy Junior won the championship, and will represent us in the national tournament, which they will have this year. If you see that next day, eight-twenty-eight, twenty-three, Donna let us know that because of the support across the United States, that they were going to run a national tournament, that we'd have to pay for that, but our champions would compete against usually the Davis County champions, and then would have the opportunity to compete against the national team, usually somebody back east. So they decided that they would run that because they had a lot of support. So just, if you see December thirteenth, we, right before the break, Mr. Barney and I had a discussion to see where we were for next year, and this is what we got from Donna. It says, "I do not think NAL will continue after this year, but the jury is still out of it," and this is a direct quote. "I do think that we can provide materials to you," which is Weaver School District. So Mr. Barney and myself will meet this month, talk about what this means and where we go because it is a great experience. If you're ever into an NAL competition, you need, you need to get there, it's tremendous, and we will provide something for them. Donna has said twice now that she would help us provide the, the questions and all those portions if we want to do, to continue. Our neighbor to the south, Davis, would like to jump on board with us because we have this relationship with them, and Mr. Barney doesn't really want to do that for both districts. So we'd rather just do it for Weaver School District. So that's kind of an update of where NAL is. Any questions about that? Okay. Next item is junior high football committee, just, just an update. We met on the fifth of December. There were about eighteen people, junior high coaches, junior high administrators, parents, myself, Mr. Moore, and, and we had a great discussion about, about junior high football. The three main concerns that came up that, which has even led to this discussion, our numbers participating, our number, numbers continue to dwindle at schools. We almost had to combine four schools down to two this year. So we did combine South and Bell for the first time, and then Orion and North have combined three of the previous last four years. So there, there was a possibility right before the season that we were going to combine those other two, which you may say, well, that's not a big deal, but right now, we had six games this year in junior high football. That would have put us down to five games in junior high football. And you think about the length of a season, is that a great product? So that, that was one thing that we, we discussed that continues to come up. Two is the cost of full program implementation, year to year, the cost of starting a new program at Mountain View, what that cost would be. And then, of course, safety was, was a major concern, is just the difference of levels of, from school to school, and those participating of the different levels. I liken that to the one eighty-six, say, you know, we have some big schools that are predominantly very good at football, and then we have some that are just learning and playing all seventh graders, and that safety level is, is crucial. I wanted to read this to you, this is in our, in our handbook, it says, in our board of managers handbook for the junior high. "The goal of Weaver School District for our junior high athletics is to train student athletes for the high school athletic level, build the basic skills of the sports they are involved in, and help to build character and growth and good sportsmanship." And with, with this in mind, that's, that's why we initiated this discussion around it. The outcome of the, the discussion that we had on that day was to collect more information. And so if you see down at the bottom, there's six, we decided to create a survey so that we could get more information from those that had been a part of it, and I think this will give us great information. Here's my question to you, is that, do we send this to just junior high parents, all junior high parents? Do we send this to junior high and high school parents of, of past? And I don't know how we just narrow it down to just those who have played football and been a part of it. And it would skew our data also, right? When we looked at numbers, we have fewer numbers on the football teams than we do on our basketball and volleyball teams, right? And then you look at the cost of running those programs is a lot less than running a football program. And so those are things that kept coming up as we had this discussion. There's lots of alternatives, and so I just wanted to give you a heads up where we were, and then have you look over those, those questions that we'd like to send out to the survey, and, and ask you if you have what you think about who we should send it to.
Could we also send it to elementary parents, like fifth and sixth graders, to say like, do your students have interest in this? Is this something they're looking forward to? Is this something that they plan on participating in if offered? I mean, I do like definitely the junior high, I don't know how you'd ask parents of the high school kids if they participated, but, I mean, I think those are all.
We came down to the, of the place, probably the start would be with our junior high. We came down to the, of the place, probably the start would be with our junior high.
Right.
People right now, and, and all, so that we get a, a taste of what other people think about the football, instead of, because we know those involved love it, right? They have this great experience. But it's for twelve kids at TH Bell that did it, right? And twenty-three at South, so. Any other questions?
Matt?
Comments? Yeah, do you?
How do you, I don't know if that's on. Okay, how do you, how do you factor in the cost with, with people who have not been involved in the program at all, but they're, they're obviously the ones paying for it, I guess is my question. How do you survey them? Because it says, "As taxpayers in Weaver County area, are the costs listed above justified, and would you continue to support the junior high football program?"
So, as a explanation to go with that survey, there would be what it costs per athlete. It's about five hundred dollars per football player to outfit them in just what the school provides for them. And so, there would be an explanation to them to see that, what, what that cost.
I guess the question is to them. Who's the them?
To the people, the junior high.
The survey.
Yeah, the parents that we're, we're sending that to. So, they understand the cost difference between football and basketball, for instance. So, interesting dilemma, interesting discussion. It's been a great discussion. We love the game of football. Just, I don't want to take too much more time, but I, I was just invited to a Wasatch Front district athletic directors meeting that they have monthly. Of the eleven districts that were there, were one of three that have any junior high athletics. So, we have eleven, that includes cheer. The next one is six, which is Davis. And then one has three down in Salt Lake that they do, and, and they classify, uh, it's, they don't have real games and things like that. It's, it's more of a, um, just a fun name. So, no one else.
In the whole state of Utah, only three school districts?
Those are the Wasatch Front.
On the Wasatch Front. Well, the Wasatch Front, three school districts play junior high sports, and we have eleven?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, we do a great job.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that's amazing to see.
I feel bad for those other junior highs. No, I mean, I've had daughters, I have two daughters that have cheer, so I've been to lots and lots of junior high sporting events.
Sure.
And I think our junior high, our kids in our district are so lucky that they get to participate in those junior high sports. So, number one, I just want to say thank you for, for that opportunity. But my question is, what's our timeframe now? If we send out the surveys, then, I mean, we're going to accumulate the data. What's our goal on when this decision will be made? Because I know it's timely, considering the new junior high, right?
Yeah, we, we like to send it out as soon as possible, so that we can get that information. And then meet and possibly come back with that information to you next month in, in February.
So, a recommendation to the Board in February?
Yeah.
You know, that's helpful, thank you, Matt.
Okay. Yes, it's true.
Hypothetically thinking, because we looked at this several years ago.
Uh-huh.
Is this on? I hope not. If it went away, can the Boundum League pick them up in the local cities like we talked about years ago?
Yeah, we.
They said they would do that.
We've talked about that, and there is opportunity in every city everywhere for, for kids to be a part of it. The one thing is, it's not their school, right? So, it would be on a Saturday, it'd be different than what it is. But there is opportunity for them to continue to play the game of football.
I think a lot of the pro junior high football parents, even knowing that there's, and I, I see both sides. Like I said, I've been to a lot of games, I've seen a lot of kids play it. A lot of the parents who are pro junior high football feel like their kid wouldn't use the ref league. It's either junior high or nothing. Not that it's not available, because it's definitely available, but they wouldn't. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't have a reason for that, but I've heard that.
And some of our, our schools don't really use the junior high program. That's why we're struggling with numbers.
The only reason I say that is you're going to have some skewed numbers.
Absolutely.
And when, with people upset and tired of taxes.
Yes.
You attach a dollar figure of that.
I know.
And I'm like Kelly. I have four girls that were all triage, and junior high and high school, I get grandsons that play football.
Yeah.
But again, you've got to look at the big picture of everybody who's paying partially, and who's, who's actually benefiting. And you're talking about dollars cost statewide, six games versus at least twelve in a Boundum League. There's lots of things you look at. So, when you say, "Well, who do we send it to?", that's a tough call, because your numbers will come back probably with.
Depending on who we send it to, we'll skew the numbers. If we send it to just the football.
Guess what?
Guess what? Everybody's going to say, "Yeah, we love it."
But the other three hundred and twenty, or whatever we're on our schedule we just seen, we're going to say, "Really?" What I mean is, you start looking at those dollars.
I think you're going to have to send it to everybody.
I do, too.
Should be everybody.
Yeah.
And I think we could go the same debate on any other program, whether it's basketball, drama, any of those.
Absolutely.
There's going to be taxpayers that are going to pay for something that is not, that they're not participating or have anybody, any participation in. And so, I think that's across the board, and that's just the umbrella that we're in. So, I think we, I think we send it to everybody.
I do, too. I agree. And then do the best, and people will be unhappy, people will be happy.
Yeah, that's right.
But I appreciate your work, your input, the people who are involved. Everybody's heart and soul into it. I'm a football player as much as anybody. Never played, too small, but.
So, my other question is, since we have eleven junior high sports, which is a lot higher than literally any other district, if we do eliminate football, do we now replace it, or are we going to have to eliminate?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. Our plan is.
So, it's not scaling back junior high sports? We're just thinking we'll replace it with something else?
The, the natural one right now, because it's a hot, hot topic, is boys volleyball, because we have all the equipment. The only thing that it would cost us on a yearly basis, and not even that, are uniforms, right? So, I'm sorry, I've taken too much time.
Thanks, Matt. Lots of those will be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. When, while Jennifer Warren's coming up, Heidi has, Heidi needs to steal thirty seconds from me here.
I'll make it thirty seconds. A lot of the policies that we currently have in Board Book have been made obsolete because we've combined the policies, or because they are a singular line and are thirty years old. And so, rather than go through each policy and explain them and why we're asking the Board to repeal them, we put a number of policies in your discount calendar day for repeal. And they're all policies that are either incorporated into other policies or no longer applicable, because they're so old and short and, and just.
All right, thank you.
They will be brief, so, I don't know about. So, open enrollment, we are delayed slightly this year due to the boundary adjustments. So, you have a board memo that indicates the schools for open enrollment, but there are some slight changes this year due to the boundary realignment that I think people need to understand. And so, if indicated, we are only going to allow for grades one through five during open enrollment if they were impacted by the boundary realignment, because the grade six has the ability to grandfather and stay there. So, we just felt like we couldn't, for those impacted by the boundary, we couldn't open grade six. In addition, kindergarten, because we don't know, as Mary Jo expressed, until kindergarten registration comes, we don't know for sure how many kindergarten students we're getting. And so, a school won't be enro, open for kindergarten during open enrollment, but after that kindergarten registration, they could potentially accept boundary exceptions based on their numbers and their capacity. Another note, just because we are opening the window slightly later, it will stay open a little bit longer than the state statute. So, our, with approval from the Board, it will open tomorrow, and we will close it on February twenty-third instead of the first Friday in February. It's going to be a tight timeline, and we're keeping track of how many boundaries, because that'll need to be determined for staffing allocations at each of the schools. Another note, just so that you're aware, with elementary schools, those elementary schools that are taking Roosevelt grade-level classrooms, they are not going to be open for open enrollment, because they're already taking additional classrooms on for the next school year.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, we have about one second. Mr. Campbell, could you open the door for us, please? Thank you, sir.